We have any veterans if you remain standing to be recognized please. Motion is second, all in favor raise your right hand. Thank you. Public information, Hampstead bypass update. The man of the hour.
How are you sir? Good. Daniel Wall did an apartment transportation. Put together a little update, we were asked to provide an update for this meeting and I assume I'm driving. Hampstead bypass.
We like what you've done so far.
Thank you. As we know, the, most of you know, the Hampstead bypass is picking up at Sluke Point and going all the way to I-40. Right now, we are currently working on the 3300B section, which is the first section north, northern part. Let's jump right into it. Currently, the project amount is $185 million. It's 5.5 miles of controlled access, four lane highway from NC-210 to US-17. 2.1 miles of urban widening on US-17 from Topsail Schools to Vista Lane, currently under construction. Two great separated interchanges at NC-210, Hoover Road, and US-17. Total of five bridges, eight culverts, and 15,779 feet of noise walls. So currently, we are 48% complete as of October 2024, so we are roughly 50% complete with the project. Contractor has placed 2.2 million cubic yards of the 4.4 million cubic yards of fill material to build the bypass. Currently have active onsite detours at Hoover Road, NC-210, and US-17. Work along US-17 will continue with utility relocations, drainage installations, and the widening operations. We're adding a few additional lanes to US-17 to make the ramps to get onto the bypass. What's next with the project? The current traffic pattern near Topsail Schools will remain in place on US-17 over the next 10 to 12 months. We do have some additional onsite detours that will be required at US-17 to complete that interchange. I'd like to come back and explain a little more as that time gets closer because it will get, it will change. Not dramatically, but it will change and I'd like to present that. The fill material, we're two and a half, 2.2 billion yards into the job, we'll continue. We'll continue to place material on the new alignment section through the woods, bringing that up to grade. Water and sewer relocations along US-17, we'll complete it later this year. We're looking over November to December of this year. These utility relocations will make way for the widening operations on existing US-17. See, the completed utility relocation will also allow the replacement of a box culvert at US-17 near Sluke Point. Contractors currently planning early 2025. This will require a traffic shift, which will be another onsite detour, but we will be maintaining two lanes in each direction, both north and south. Construction along US-17 will continue from Sluke Point to Topsail Schools. Work will be occurring away from traffic and utilizing nighttime lane closures as needed. Picture of the future US-17 interchange. That is our current construction, this recent aerial photo of August 2024. As you can see, the interchange is taking shape. The ramps coming from US-17 starting to go up. The bridge, we just set girders on last week.
Could you go back one to the?
Sure.
The design?
Yes, sir.
There's been a lot of conversation recently about Transfer Station Road. It will not intersect with 17 and you'll have to exit Transfer Station Road, go to the light by the high school, is that correct?
There will be a light over here on Vista Lane, right across from Topsail Schools, and then there will also be a connection up here on US-17. So, we call this road a service road called Y-19. This is a two-way, two-lane, it will go both north and south, and it will connect to US-17.
Yeah, that was my understanding, there was a lot of conversation here recently, I think. The word's getting out that, you know, that's, a lot of people thought it was completely going away, and I said, no, it's going to tie in.
That's right.
To Vista Drive.
Yeah, it does not go away, it gets its own dedicated service road, if you will. Current progress for the interchange. These are the completed noise walls and first mile, mile and a half of pavement behind Topsail Schools. As you can see, the noise wall extends quite a ways here. Contractors working quite diligently, especially with this good weather, to place fill material as fast as he can to continue up the project with this paving. So, there's a lot of activity. I do get calls about progress and try to express there is a lot of activity going on that doesn't connect directly to the interchange where you can see it. So, we are working on this new alignment section rather hard. An update for the 210 interchange, the future, this is the proposed alignment. At our current update, we just finished several box culverts connecting a creek through the project, and we started to bring fill in to start working on the bridge abutments. Obviously, the contractors placed a pier, the middle bent of the structure fairly early in the process, but now we're working on bringing the dirt up on both sides, which is a fairly time-consuming process with those 28, 30-foot fills.
Can I ask you a question about this picture also?
Yes, sir.
Been asked, is the south side interchange is going to be done at this phase and dead end?
So, we go back to my previous picture, the south side will be constructed to about this point right here. I'm not sure if you can see it right, the 3300A future. So, we will construct everything going north, obviously. The bridge, we'll put 210 back on the new alignment, back in its old alignment, going over the bypass, and we'll connect both these ramps and we'll stop roughly right here.
So, in the future, that shouldn't be a whole lot of disturbance there with traffic flow?
No, we shouldn't be affecting 210 very much at all for the future construction. The new project starts here and then heads south to I-40, 140. An update on Holiday Drive, as of August 24, we've completed a triple-barrel box culvert, which is a fairly, fairly large culvert for conveyance of water through here. Completed the smaller culvert under Holiday Drive during construction, we actually had an onsite detour where we pushed traffic over, constructed parts of the box, phased it in, built a smaller one. Now, we've got traffic back on Holiday Drive proper in its original alignment. That holiday will not really be affected during the future construction, although we do have, there is a bridge going over the section of Holiday, so we will be building up dirt on both sides in the near future. Contractors working that way down. Update on Hoover Road, here's the final design of the Hoover Interchange. Here we are to date, again, similar situation with 210. Contractors started with the middle bent in for the structure fairly early, and yet crews available, and now we're working fairly diligently to get the road, the ramps constructed, to fill in, and start to come up to grade so that we can continue with the bridge construction. That's all I had for update on the 3300B project, which is the current project. Any questions or concerns?
I get questions a lot about this too, and I know the answer, but I'm going to ask you so you can state it. So, when they built the Surf City Bridge, there was incentives for that contractor to finish that bridge ahead of schedule. Is there any incentives for this contractor to finish ahead?
For the current project?
Yes.
So, currently, there are no incentives in the contract to finish early. Yeah, the Surf City Bridge, I do know that was very specific right into that contract, currently, which was not put into this current contract.
How are they on schedule?
Their plan was 50%, we're at 48%, so we're 2% plus or minus, and that varies, you know, monthly with progress because, you know, they put in more dirt one month, this month will have a good month. So, they'll be back on schedule. So, it's, you know, I think they're, they're doing what they can to stay on schedule.
I know the south end, the next section of the LET was the southern part, that's all we want to tie in with military cutoff and 140 there.
That's correct.
Big interchange.
That's correct.
That's really a hell, a military cutoff they built.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. So, the whole project, the whole project was permitted, which was military cutoff, 3300A and 3300B, that was one large, you know, corridor. So, military cutoff being in place, you know, is really pushing, you know, we're building north and it really pushes us to get the middle connector done. Really puts an emphasis on that piece. So, yeah, and military cutoff, you know, they built several abutments near where we tie in with our new bridges, so, you know, some of the infrastructure is already in place on the military cutoff side. You know, our next project will really be to construct from 140 north. A lot of bridges over 140, so there's definitely some, some interesting structures.
Yeah, I understand that's going to be the first in this area, the double-decker bridges and?
It will be one bridge going over another, and then there's a nice long curved steel bridge, which is going to be a, it's the only one I can think of in our area. But, let's see, as far as an update for the A section, as of this month, the right-of-way should be complete, completed, I'm hopeful. I think we have one property left we're trying to obtain, but I was under the impression that was going to be completed by this month. Railway design is 100% complete, utility relocations have begun, so we have started clearing on Sid Berry Road, the utility corridor for Duke Energy. So, Duke currently is rather busy out west, so we took over the clearing to go ahead and establish the corridor, and then when they're finishing up out west, they're going to come back here and start relocating power there. We've got several other utility companies that we're working with to try to get some of the work, some of their utilities out of our way. And right now, the let date is July 15, 2025, so it will be advertised May-ish. So, estimated cost for the A section is $222 million.
So, you've already started with the utility relocation?
Yes, sir.
That's a big job, isn't it?
Yes, sir. Well, it's not quite as big as the B section, but we, we got the opportunity to get ahead of that one, so we are getting done what we can, so we'll be ready for the contractor.
Yeah, I'm tired of digging into your numbers. I worked on I-40 all the way from Wallace to Wilmington, all that big interchange.
All right. That was a big project. So, any questions about the B section or the A section?
Thank you for the update.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, board members? We thank you.
Thank you.
See you in a few months.
Thank you.
6.2, Extension Master Gardener Volunteer Program.
Hello, everyone. My name's Tiffany Boone, I'm the Horticulture and Local Foods Agent for Pender County Cooperative Extension. Last year, I gave you an update about my horticulture program as well as the Master Gardener program that I coordinate, and this year, I wanted to give you some more details about that, so I brought my friend Marie Palmer with me. She is the President of our Extension Master Gardener Volunteer Association here in Pender County.
Thank you for having me here. I apologize for the shakingness in my voice, I'm undergoing chemo and it makes me shake everywhere. I just had treatment last Wednesday. I am the current President, I've been there for three years, and my term is done, and we've done a lot. I came in post-COVID, and it's kind of been wonderful because we've been doing a lot. I'm going to talk about the impact of our association and the extensions programs on our community. I'm really not used to doing this, so you'll have to bear with me. It was this one? It is an all-volunteer program, and it is not just a gardening course. The information we have been taught and give out is research-based through NC State. We do focus a lot on educating the public, and we extend the reach of the local extension staff. There are currently 95 EMGVs in Pender County, 89 who are active. During COVID, we went down to about 30-something TIF, so our new classes, which we have every year, have been really active. We've gained about 25 members each year. Last year, the EMGV and TIF reached 173,230 people. So, as I said, all our information is research-based and unbiased, we help people, businesses, and communities. We help them solve their gardening problems, develop skills, and build a better future. We will be having our next class this, starting this January, it's once a week, from 9:00 to noon. There are 17 classes, so they finish up at the end of April, beginning of May, and it's a huge amount of information that they learn. A lot of it is free to have, do it on your own, but there are lectures, hands-on activities, and field trips, which makes it, it's fun if you want to join us. One of our programs that supports the extension is Speakers Bureau. We offer and give presentations to HOAs, garden clubs, church groups, and senior centers. We used to do it differently, we had them come to us, we had programs at the Bergon, the Hampstead Library, now we go to them. COVID changed a lot, people don't want to come out. So, we have lots of programs we can offer, you see them listed there, Think Before You Plant, Composting Pollinators, Soils Lawn Care, Weeds, Plant This Instead, Propagation Workshop, Deer-Resistant Plants, and Container Gardening. These were all developed by members, and they are presented by those members. We also have the Ask a Master Gardener booth, which is a booth set up with a tent and a table, a nice tablecloth, and a sign. We have about 50 handouts, and we have knowledgeable master gardeners there who can answer all your gardening questions. We set up at Farmer's Markets, the biggest one is the Poplar Grove Weekly Farmer's Market, and that, we're there once a month, we don't go every week, but they love having us there, we have a very good relationship with them. Also, the Hampstead Farmer's Market, the very popular Poplar Grove Herb and Garden Fair. We have two plant sales a year, which I'll talk about later, but we set the booth up there. Johnson's Nursery in Willard, we've been collaborating with them on some of their fests, I hate the wind, my voice is shaking, this is terrible. And the Cape Fear Native Plant Festival, which is in the, we just had it a couple months ago. We set up at Pender Pines, so we seem to be having more and more venues asking us to be there, which is great, we love going out and doing that. Whoops, okay. School outreach, that is one of our, I think, most participated in programs, the schools love having us go there. Also, the Hampstead Farmer's Market, the very popular Poplar Grove Herb and Garden Fair. We have two plant sales a year, which I'll talk about later, but we set the booth up there. Johnson's Nursery in Willard. We've been collaborating with them on some of their fests. I hate the way my voice is shaking. This is terrible. And the Cape Fear Native Plant Festival, which is in the, we just had it a couple of months ago. We set up at Pender Pines. So, we seem to be having more and more venues asking us to be there, which is great. We love going out and doing that. Whoops. Okay. School Outreach. That is one of our, I think, most participated in programs. The schools love having us go there. The EMGs love doing it. We're currently in five schools, elementary schools in Pender County, first and third grades. The volunteers are there once a month from four to six hours. They might teach six to eight classes. It's a set curriculum that we've created. There's segments on the composition of soil, pollinators, composting, and it's all very hands-on. And the kids love it. They get so excited. The garden ladies are coming, and they really learn a lot. Some of them, we've learned, don't even really know what a vegetable is. They haven't had vegetables. So, this is a real eye-opener for them. We currently have 21 EMG volunteers involved. Last year, we, we've done some cool things. The head of it is very creative. Last year, we added a class for students with special needs. That's at Topsail Anne and Dale. And we are now growing lettuce and vegetables at two of the schools for the turtles at the Karen Beasley Sea Turtle Hospital. So, that's really exciting for the kids and for us. We have our four demonstration gardens throughout the county. The big one right here at 801 South Walker Street. If you've never seen it, please go visit, especially in the spring. It's beautiful. A lot of work goes into these gardens. We have one at Berga Library, Hampstead Library, and at Poplar Grove, we actually have two. One's an herb garden and one's a civil era, a Civil War era garden. We actually go about one, a group goes once a month and takes care of those gardens. We do our own fundraising. Our biggest fundraisers are our spring and plant, uh, fall plant sales. Our spring sale, and I'm putting in a little plug, is April 11th and 12th of 2025. It'll be right here at the Extension Office. We just had our fall plant sale.
Do you want to come up and talk? You're so busy talking in the audience, it's distracting. Go ahead, ma'am. I'm sorry.
That's all right. It was kind of encouraging to me. Our fall plant sale was just October 4th and 5th. We used to collaborate with Poplar Grove, had their goosebumps in the Grove, but we found we could do better as just a plant sale. And the United Methodist Church was gracious enough to allow them, us, to use their property during their pumpkin sale. And then, we've added this past year, poinsettia sale, which is current. We have flyers if you'd like to order poinsettias. They're locally grown, which I really like. And they're very healthy. They're not your run-of-the-mill grocery store plants.
Where do they grow?
At the plant place.
Okay. Will we take...
They grow 10,000 poinsettias, and they're really healthy. I still have one from last year. And they sell them for fundraisers. We buy them wholesale and then sell them. We also had a yard sale here last year. We allowed the public to buy tables, and we also had tables where our members donated items, and that was pretty successful. But all this takes work, as you know. It kind of takes away from our gardening, but we need the money to run our programs. We give out grants and scholarships. We haven't been too heavy on the scholarships. We're have, we always seem to have trouble. I've been there since 2016. It's always been a struggle to find people to apply, believe it or not. We try to do publicity and get the word out there, but we don't get very many people seeking scholarships. We do give out a lot of grants. Some of the ones we've done are the Living Wall at the Berga Hospital. Is it still called Dosher? Or is it Nova?
Nova.
Nova.
The hospital here. There's a living wall there that they were able to create from a grant from us. I had a student from the Pender County Early College High School. She got a grant from us. She made a pollinator garden for her girl scout gold award. She also wrote a book, which she gave us, a kid's book, and she taught middle school. Middle, yeah, middle school. She had many talents. It was a huge project, and we were very proud of her. We helped fund the Hampstead Library Seed Catalog. Are any of you familiar with that? You can go, it's the old catalog, card catalog, but it's full of seeds. And anyone can go in there and get seeds, or you can bring seeds in, and the kids love it. We've done projects for the Karen Beasley Sea Turtle Rehab and Rescue Center and Poplar Grove. We gave money so that Topsail Elementary could create a pollinator, pollinator and butterfly garden. And it goes on and on. So, we do Making of the Greens, which is where we, in the, one of the first weeks of December, we gather. We get greens from our, our yards and our, in the woods. We take little yogurt cups and we arrange the greens with decorations. And those go, I've lost my place. Those go on the trays for clients and patients at Meals on Wheels, one of the local nursing homes, the senior center, and the hospital. And they're really cute. We make over 300 of those. And we have fun. There's Christmas music, there's food, of course. We always have food involved. And then, we go on lots of educational field trips. We go to many local gardens, including Airly and the gardens at the Cowan Museum, and Keansville is upcoming. We've been to many agricultural venues and farms. We've been to a hydroponic plant place. We've been to Brook Green Gardens down in South Carolina, Plants Delights in Raleigh. And we've been in the Holly Shelter Wetlands with Bill Messer. Are you familiar with him?
Yes.
He's a great naturalist. He knows everything about that place. And we've had some special projects recently. The town of Surf City asked us to help them with planting of some of their commonary, common areas. And also, you have the vineyards here at Johnson Park, which Mark, Mark and Tim, who was our former agent before TIF planted. And we go out yearly and prune them, and they take care of fertilizing them. So, that's it for us. If you want more information, that's our website, pender.ces.ncsu.edu. It's all a mouthful. And we're on Facebook, at North Carolina State Extension Master Gardener Volunteers, Pender County. Were there any questions? Okay, thank you.
I have a question. What can you do with mums after they bloom? Can you replant them?
So, if you put them in the ground and they're hardy mums, they will come back. I have more mums than I want. I planted some and they always come back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Public comment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Don Hall.
Hello. Ready?
Yes, sir.
Dave. I, uh, just gonna tell you that on behalf of the Board of Education, we appreciate the joint meeting that we all had the end of last month. And appreciate everyone's support from here over the past year and before and after. So, if there's anything else that anyone needs, we can get together again at any time, but just want to say thank you in a surprise way without Dr. Breedlove, so, just me. He had no idea I was coming. I'm sure he'll find out later, but...
Well, I'm sure he would second your comments.
I would hope so.
And we appreciate the opportunity.
I would hope so. But, uh, can I answer any questions about the school for anybody today? It's totally unplanned.
Do we have a Constitution Day on September 17th in the school system?
Not that I'm aware of, but that would probably be a good idea.
Because I was looking at this little Constitution handout, and in 2004, there was a public law passed that on September 17th of each year should be designated as Constitution Day, and September 17th through 23rd of each year as Constitution Week. That each educational institution that receives federal funds for a fiscal year shall hold an educational program on the United States Constitution on September 17th. And the way the constitutional provisions are being bandied about, I think it's a good idea for us to have such training in our, in our school system.
Well, we will put it on our agenda and see.
All right.
That's a good idea.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chairman Hall.
All right.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Don.
Daniel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board. Good afternoon. My name is Daniel Adams, and I'm the Planning and Community Development Director for the county. I just wanted to use this opportunity to, to announce a public service announcement, if you will. The county has been working on the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. So, I'm sure this board is aware, we've been going out and engaging the community in the past six weeks. The deadline for that community engagement window is October 22nd, which is tomorrow. We have pushed that deadline back one week. So, the new deadline for the first community engagement window is now October 29th. We are gonna use this week to go out and engage with folks as much as possible. We're also asking that you help spread the word about an online survey. You can take that survey by going online to our website. It's pendercountync.gov/Imagine. So, again, October 29th, one week from tomorrow, is the deadline for the community engagement window.
And what kind of questions will they be asked on this survey? What are their visions for the future of Pender County, such as that? Can you elaborate?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. The, the survey is designed to get feedback on what is the vision for Pender County as far as land use and development goes over the next 25 years. So, there'll be various questions related to what should the county prioritize? Say, housing density, or utility infrastructure upgrades, or more parks and open space, things of that nature.
And there are questions pertaining to rural areas and rural agricultural land preservation as well?
That's, that's absolutely right.
So, that's important for our farming community to get involved and go online with that survey?
That's right. Yes, ma'am.
And y'all are doing a really good job getting the word out. I've attended several of your, your meetings, and they've, they've been well-attended, and the staff has been very engaged in the process, so...
Thank you. We, we got a good team that's, that's been very diligent about trying to engage with the folks in the, in the community.
Daniel, to date, do you have like a rough estimate of how many responses you might have had to date?
Yes, sir. As of Friday, we had 1,205, which includes the folks who've taken the survey online, and then all the folks who showed up to the, to the meetings.
That's very good.
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Thank you, sir. Well, members, you've had a chance to review the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve, considered.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have no approvals and resolutions tonight. Appointments, 11.1. Yeah, you could've just stayed, huh?
We're too fast.
That was quick. Efficient Government. Mr. Ron Satterfield has applied to fill the vacancy on the planning board that was left by Mr. John Grunfest, whose last meeting was October 1st earlier this month. Mr. Satterfield has extensive experience working in the local government sector. So, he's worked in the public sector for over two decades, most recently as the City of Wilmington Assistant Planning Director. And then, he's also worked in the private sector doing land use and, and planning, and he currently works part-time with the Council of Governments. So, his, his, his background and knowledge and skillset, I think, would be a welcome addition to the planning board, should the board choose to appoint him. And also, I'll just note that this position is just filling the vacancy, so this seat will need to be filled again come January, end of January 2025. So, it's a short-term.
Is this candidate interested in continuing?
I believe so. Yes, ma'am.
Motion of whose district is it?
We don't do those by district currently, so if anyone can make the motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
I would say he's very qualified.
Yes, sir.
Well, like you have him, sounds like.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no items under any of the water and sewer districts. There is nothing under the Pender Water Health where...
I, I have a question.
For water and sewer?
Yes.
For which one, no?
For our director, for our esteemed director. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I just wanted an update on the 421 water project funding, on where we're at with our, with that project.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Anthony Galon. I'm the Executive Director of Pender County Utilities. On September 30th, we successfully turned in an application to the state, asking for a CDBG loan of $3 million. Actually, it's a grant.
Can you speak up some? I'm having problems.
I'm very sorry.
That's all right.
On September 30th, we turned in an application for a CDBG grant of $3 million. The community helped us out extremely well. We turned in a total of approximately 95 income applications that were turned in, and that was enough for us to go ahead and proceed with what was requested. We did plenty of, uh, public hearings, and we submit those as well with the presentations. At this point, we are waiting. This is the hardest part of the whole process. It's out there. I understand that there are not many applicants, but we're in, in, in the bucket now, so we're just waiting to see what the legislation would say, whether they would take our, our plea and provide us with the money that we're asking for. We understand that there is plenty of money out there. They just gotta go with priorities. Who, who have the most need for this money? So, it, it's just now a waiting game.
I say we do.
Yeah.
So, is this gonna be a matching grant fund, or is it a straight-up?
No, it's a straight, well, I don't want to use the word free, but it's, it's a grant. It's, it's money that we don't have to pay back.
Wonderful.
You're gonna need so many per mile to make it worthwhile.
So, so, right now, we have enough money to grab the first 45 customers on that line.
I mean, for people to sign up. They gotta...
Excuse me?
You gotta have so many people per mile to sign up, don't you?
We do, we do, and we're way, way above the number on, on that. Like I say, if there's 45 connections, we can get on that first mile.
You and your staff did a really good job getting the public into your meetings and doing a good job servicing this project. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I also have a question. Has there been any updates on the ones that have paid their money 20 years ago waiting on water?
Yes. So, I have, uh, our deputy director have looked into some of the addresses that have been given to us, and there are small possibilities for some of them. They're, not say small possibilities. There are possibilities for those where we have to do small extensions. At this moment, we're waiting for some fundings that we have available to the utilities. It's just a matter of when, when, when that money will come, and then we will have to prioritize which of those we can go ahead and address based on the amount of piping and designing and the state permitting. But they are on a list. We have them on our radar, and we will address them as, as we get funding and money enough to handle this project. Yes, sir.
Believe it or not, I go to the barber shop, and when I was at the barber shop, I was confronted, and a gentleman, can they get their money back? They're asking me, can they get their money back? They've been waiting 18, 20 years for water.
Yep.
So, where's that money?
So...
If you could answer that.
The answer to your question is yes. They can get their... The answer to your question is yes, they can get their money back. Now, understand that some of them pay less than two hundred dollars and if they are to get that money back, then if the water line comes in place, they will have to pay the full value of that tap and connection. So at this point, sir, I'm, I'm trying to get the utilities to get itself in order so that we can go ahead and address this group of people that are in need of water. And I would recommend to be a little bit more patient, they have already waited long enough. But I assure you that we're doing our best to see if we can move this forward. I give you an example, the group of Batson Road, that's, that's a group that paid money years ago and that water line is now in the ground. We're just waiting for approval from the state and everybody will get their taps. And it took a long time, I, I understand this, this is not what I'm doing, this came from my predecessors. My job now is to pick up where they left it and, and take it to a successful project. Yes, they can get their money back if they desire, so I just recommend that for the small amount of money, if they can wait a little bit longer, they can get these water lines in place and get their taps at a very affordable price.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
I can't believe that it was done that twenty years ago, waited that far ahead, they let people pay. That's not good business.
Well, because if you will recall at the time, the deal was we were getting funding through, what was it?
USDA.
USDA and they required a certain degree of density. But we allowed folks to pay preliminarily towards their installation and their, and their hookup fee.
So, so.
But now if they, rather than two hundred, if the water line comes by their house, the hookup fee is what?
So, so the thing, that's, that's, that's the thing.
Yeah.
That originally the utilities requested for the citizens to sign in.
Right.
Some of them, which I would not do this ever, but at the time, some of them put this money upfront on properties that do not have dwellings. Sadly, and I don't know if this was not explained properly, once that contract went into effect, some of them started paying if the meter was already in place, which created some issues. A big group decided to give away that right because they didn't want to pay that monthly, that monthly fee. The other ones where the lines have not been there put in, it was just like, they just paid this fee and they're just waiting for this water line to come in. Now, understand that if they give away that right, we're looking at fifty-seven hundred dollars to put a meter on their property. I would recommend them to leave that money in the, in the account. We have the paperwork, I have seen the paperwork personally, I went with our, our accounts manager, I went through all the paperwork and I know we have it. We have all the paperwork available, so when this water line manifests, we just go back to those accounts and go ahead and do the tapping and the meter installations without they having to go through the fifty-seven hundred old deal. That money is there secured, that money is there for, for them, that's our commitment to provide that water tap.
Mr. Galon, I just want to make a comment to thank you for your engagement. I know you're relatively new in this position and you got thrown into a lot, you and your staff both. I want to thank you for your engagement and your proactive staying in contact with the citizens about this because that's what it matters, a lot of folks just like to hear from you and say, hey, we're working on this. They don't want to feel forgotten, which they've been forgotten for a long time.
Mm-hmm.
But thank you for all you're doing for them.
Yes, and I appreciate that very much, Mr. Burton. And it is kind of a little bit hard for me as well because sometimes you feel like I'm repeating myself over and over. But it's a matter of doing the right thing and then it comes to the hard part, which is the waiting. And that's where I am right now. I, I am hoping to God that this paperwork goes through and we get our funding and we can start putting water lines in the ground and we can start giving water the, the, the service that they were promised.
We really need to complete our water lines all the way across the county.
Absolutely, absolutely, and that, that is in our list of priorities. And not giving an excuse, we all also have to remember that a lot of new regulations are coming that is, is requiring us to improve our methodologies of treatments and our whales and our water treatment plants. So we have to balance those as well.
Well, kudos to you staying on top of it since you've taken the reins, we do appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board of Health, Board of Social Services, nope. Items from the county attorney.
Yes, sir. Uh, I want to alert the board to something, it's not a case that we're involved in. It will be potentially years before it gets resolved. But last week, there was a case involving an eye surgeon from New Bern that was challenging the Certificate of Needs Law in North Carolina. And the Supreme Court, in a unanimous decision, sent it back to the trial court to resolve some constitutionality questions over certificate of need. There have been some members of the General Assembly that have been looking at this. But this would not be, can anybody get the votes? Or it would be a, a matter of constitutional provisions in the North Carolina Constitution. So just because that was part of what, and Commissioner Newton will well remember, that was part of our discussion with Novant when we were going through all of that, was a certificate of need that was tied to beds in Pender County. Potentially, this decision could change that. And I just wanted to let the board be aware that it, 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 it could change. And the, again, it, as in many places.
For the certificate of need in the medical community is a certificate that's issued by the state that takes into consideration certain factors of the population, formulates it and spits out your certificate of need, giving how many hospital beds you need for your county population.
Right, or again, how many MRIs do you need in an area to serve the people? In this case, again, it was an eye doctor that was doing Lasik and he was saying, I can do it for twenty-five percent of the cost that the hospital does it for. But I can't get a certificate of need to do it, the hospital's locked it up. And so that is the, then it was dismissed at the trial court. The Supreme Court said, no, go back and have it not just on this one guy's issue, but on the whole concept of certificate of need. And again, because as you said, part of, and part of our agreement with Novant was tied with the certificate of need.
Yeah, we had to sign over our certificate of need for them to assume our hospital and servicing our citizens in the existing facilities within the contract that we wrote for. But the certificate of need stays with the county.
Right, right, but.
But also, is it the Medicare revisions that rolled out last December? Doesn't that allow freestanding facilities to, to, to offer procedures that prior had been committed and relegated to the hospitals?
Um.
For example, surgical.
I'm not sure how much of the cert, you know, the, the, basically outpatient surge centers were there. That is continuing to change, but I, but this would be a situation where.
It did, it did change for surge centers. No, no CONs needed for surge centers now.
Right, and this, this would dramatically change the existing system. Not, again, not my place to say whether that's good or bad, it just would be a substantial change.
I think it would make it more competitive.
It would.
And, and drive down the prices.
And it's, it really doesn't make sense for the state to control what county has, how many hospital beds.
Exactly.
That should be the free market.
Exactly.
And, and that's where the court is hinting that it's going, and again, this is not trying to get political about anything. There was a case from a raceway in the Piedmont, I forget which county now, I apologize. But their case, because there's a provision of a right to earn a living in the North Carolina Constitution. And the court has said, well, if he can prove what he says, then he may have a case. And again, that was, it was across, you know, any partisan lines on the Supreme Court doing that. So thi- this certificate of need case is going along with that, as you say. Because the argument is the free market should determine.
Yeah, it's interesting.
And again, I'm not taking a position, not my place to, but I just wanted to let you know that that could be a change and you may start hearing things about it and you may start getting calls from people trying to, to persuade you. That being said, we do have some, a number of items for closed session. Item three, attorney-client privilege, including Coastal Pine Solar, twenty-four, five twenty-five, North Carolina Court of Appeals number. And item four, economic development. Item five, possible acquisition of real property. And item six, personnel.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. County Manager?
Yes, sir, Chairman George, one item. Last Monday, we started advertising the Pender County Citizens Leadership Academy. The intent of this academy is to provide residents the opportunity to learn about various departments and agencies across our county. The academy will start in March twenty twenty-five and end October twenty twenty-five. They will meet once a month and citizens will have the opportunity to meet and learn from different departments and see different parks of Pender County. Just a few, we'll check out the Pender Commerce Park, we will also go to the Sea Turtle Rescue Facility and get to see all that Pender County has to offer our citizens. If folks are interested, they can fill out and submit an application online. The deadline to submit is November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, five o'clock PM. We are already getting applications and our intent is to not exceed fifteen applicants, so we will have limited capacity for this inaugural academy. And last but not least, wanted to thank Sarah Fulton and Brandy Cobb for working on getting this out to the public. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, good, I'll thank them. Assistant County Manager?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman and fellow Commissioners. Of course, as you know, the other day, we had a groundbreaking at Kiwanis Park for Phase Four. It was a huge success, very exciting, and so that's prompted us. We have some other projects coming up soon as far as groundbreakings and ribbon cutting. So of course, all of those are open to members of the public and so we just wanted to remind every one of those projects and those dates. So first of all, for the Law Enforcement Center, that will be on Wednesday, November sixth, at two PM, fourteen seventeen Old Savannah Road South at the side of the project, obviously. Next would be Penderly Ribbon Cutting for a dedication for the park as a whole. Of course, prompted by the new picnic shelter and restroom facility that has just been completed. That will be on Wednesday, November thirteenth, at three thirty, and that's at two thirty-one W H Robbins Road in Willard. And then next would be the Department of Health and Human Services. That groundbreaking will be on Wednesday, November twentieth, at two PM, at two ninety-eight Progress Drive at the construction site here in Bergall, just around the corner. And then finally, we have the Central Pender Park project that we currently have out for bid. The intent is to bring for the board's approval of, review and approval of the bids in the December board meeting. And then soon thereafter, once things are established, we'll work towards setting a date for the groundbreaking for that project. And which will probably be late January into early February, so. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Newton?
Yes, I am currently serving on the Novant-Pender Medical Center Board. And in a meeting earlier this week, as you know, the hospital is currently under some very extensive renovation due to a ceiling, roof membrane leak. They're essentially sealing the interior from the interior walls. That, we're anticipating that the acute care and swing beds will be fully functional, hopefully by mid-December, that's what their target is. And the skilled nursing will be in full swing by the first quarter twenty twenty-five. They have incurred costs of one point five million to date and anticipated that there will be a total expenditure all in at the end of the project of about four million dollars. The good news for, for us in the, in the community is that this one point five and this, this, this cost of these renovations are not coming out of the promised ten million dollars in improvements toward making our hospital a general community hospital. This is just repair and restoration of the project. And so I'm thankful that we have a good neighbor of Novant and that they're getting this facility that services our community and has for a very long time back in proper working order, so thank you, Novant.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner McCoy?
I had the opportunity Saturday to attend the Fall Festival on Courthouse Square. A lot of people, a great crowd that day and talked to a lot of people, always enjoy that. But it was really a good festival on Courthouse Square Saturday. And also I'd like to say, if you haven't voted yet, I'd love to people voting. I'm really impressed how many people are voting, but I want to reminder of already, make sure you get out and vote for our constitutional duty, so appreciate it.
Yeah, and early voting, just to segue of what you were saying, early voting is Monday through Saturday this week and Monday through Saturday the following week as well.
Mr. Rose?
I want to thank Chair Newton for the update on the hospital. I've been getting a lot of questions about the hospital.
Sure.
Also went to the Autumn Fest, I stayed on the out boundaries and Bergall did a good job, I see her back there. And they did a great job with that and I did go to the Kiwanis Park and it was windy, but it was good. So looking forward to see that going and Pender, the Pender Park going on one seventeen. That's it.
Commissioner Burton?
Uh, yeah, I did, I did have the opportunity, I was honored to have the opportunity to go to Phase Four of the Kiwanis Park with everybody the other day and I think it was a great, it's a great thing. It's going to be a great thing when they're done with that facility with tennis courts and pickleball courts and basketball courts, it's going to be really nice. The last time I had the honor to be there was two and a half days, seventeen years ago, when my son completed his Eagle Scout project by putting in, we put in mosaic benches around the first set of playground stuff there. So it was, it brought back some good memories for me, but it was a good time.
Thank you, sir. And I also attended the Kiwanis Park Phase Four and I think I've been to all Phase Fours and even before there was actually phases there, so that park holds a special place to me. It's right within a five hundred feet of my house, for one thing, so I'm constantly there. I'm glad to see it's expanding, I'm glad to see we're expanding parks across the county. That's something that's long overdue and, and I attended some of the comprehensive plan meetings and that is one of the main dot getters is, is more recreational and open space. So I think the county has seen that and hopefully they'll continue to see that we need to expand our options for the residents and the, the community, not just with, with parks such as Kiwanis Park, with, with ball fields and stuff of passive parks where we can go and have a picnic and not, you know, have to worry about screaming kids on the, on the baseball field or, or just places to go and relax and, and other options, opportunities that we can offer our citizens with programming, from senior citizens to babies. So I'm excited to see how that progresses now that the county's finally growing. To piggyback on Commissioner McCoy's statement about early voting, it's been very active at the polls and that's great to see that people are taking the, this election seriously. I encourage everybody to be patient when they go. There's some polls that they're working as hard as they can and they're using all the equipment that they've, they've got and there's, there's still an hour and a half, two hour wait. So just be patient, you'll get through it and it's, it'll make you feel better when you can complain if it didn't go your way, you can say, at least I voted. Other than that, I have no, nothing further, is there a motion to?
I, I have a, a comment. Something came up when I-
Something came up when I went to vote the first time and there was a problem that the Board of Elections couldn't rectify immediately because the polling place that I was at, the Shallow Columbia Fire Department, did not have Wi-Fi access, is what I was told. So I had to wait and come back another time. But it, but it occurred to me that if our fire departments don't have Wi-Fi access, it might be time for us to look at that because there's no excuse for them not to have full Wi-Fi access with Focus Broadband available or, and/or through four county who partners with Focus Broadband. So that was what I was told, if that is a, not the, the right facts, if, if that's not for a fact that they're not Wi-Fi accessible, we really need all of our emergency, I would think, all of our emergency facilities to be Wi-Fi accessible. Yes, sir? At Shallow, well, we need to get that word out then to, to our Board of Elections spokes.
I understand transmitting, but what would, I wonder what that would impact your vote when you're writing on a ballot?
It has nothing to do with the vote. It had everything to do with access to documents that were being revised at Board of Election Headquarters.
But they wouldn't let you vote?
Well, not to get too deep in the weeds, there was a push to pull a lot of inactive voters from our voting rolls and that came down from Raleigh, so they were in a, in a bind to get that done in time and there were mistakes that were made.
Okay.
That they needed to rectify and couldn't rectify immediately because according to them, there was not Wi-Fi accessibility to, to the polling, to their equipment in certain facilities.
And I'll be happy to follow up with our Elections Director on that next.
Thank you, and we've got our, our good IT Director here as well and I just thought I'd bring that to your attention.
We're also working with the, with the Board of Elections Director to make sure that they have mobile internet next time.
Can, can you come?
I'm willing.
That comment.
We're actually working with Greg to make sure that next year that they are fully equipped with mobile internet for all, for all precincts.
Excellent, excellent. Well, this is not a complaint against the IT Department who did an excellent job this time assisting the download of, of the laptops, as I understand it, and the equipment that the Board of Elections needed and our Board of Elections Director is doing an excellent job being responsive to whatever complaints that I was aware of, at least, and had last week, so kudos to both of you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Motion to go into closed session to discuss item three, attorney-client privilege, including coastal pines, solar farms. Item four, economic development. Item five, acquisition of real property. And item six, personnel.
Is there a second? Second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. We will be in closed session until 7:00 PM.
Motion to come in a closed session.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. We are now back into open session. We will start the public hearing meetings for special use and zoning map amendments and resolutions, 706. So items 21.1 and 21.2 have been continued to number four, but I understand that we have some signups that would like to speak.
That was a request. It was related to me. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll allow, we encourage you to come back on the fourth also, if you could. So we'll allow three minutes is our standard time. So 21.1 will be the first one. It's the rezoning of 2024-75. Request to add 84 multi-units, multifamily units to existing Hawthorne and Hampstead Development.
Yes, sir. Max Beckwith?
So while Mr. Beckwith is coming forward, let me just read the acknowledgement here. Speakers will be called, be acknowledged by the board chairperson in order which names appear on the sheet. Speaker shall address the board from the podium and begin comments by stating name and address. Speaker shall be courteous and respectful in their remarks and shall refrain from personal attacks, the use of profanity, and the discussion of personnel or other matters deemed confidential by law. And speakers will be limited to two, or three minutes.
Hey, all. Max Beckwith, 871 Resorice Road, Curry, North Carolina. Y'all know me. I don't need three minutes. I'm gonna be down and dirty with the numbers. Just get to it.
Be nice. Don't be down and dirty.
In a good way, I promise.
All right.
The applicant has the rezoning for the PD and RMCD4. If you look at the application, it has been at the request of the staff and the planning board, denied by both committees. I will point to the UDO 4.8 Mixed Use Districts, Section B, subsection C, to which it gives out the requirements for lot designations, even within the mixed-use usage. It still calls for certain requirements for setbacks and everything else like that. I will point out that the front setback, they currently have in their proposal, five foot, the UDO dictates 25, so it's a negative 20. You have a minimum rear of 10, or 15. They have 10, so it's negative 5. Side is 10, they have 5, that's negative 5. Minimum lot size they're proposing for a single-family is 5,000, and the UDO that calls for 15,000 minimum, with the exception of 12,000 for only for, in 4.14 zoning district dimensionals, it requires for RP zoning can lessen to 12,000 so long as water and sewers available to location. You have the minimum structure separation between buildings at 10-foot is what they're require, is what they're recommending. Requirement is 20, and this is all in reference to 4.8.1B.2E of the UDO. So within the fact that you have both two committees that have said they deny this, on the fact that it doesn't meet the basic means of zoning, I don't think there should be any discussion further on whether or not this is denied. Thank you.
Is that your only, is that your only issue is with setbacks?
My issue is that they do not meet the zoning requirements in terms of the coding enforcement that the UDO has set forth in terms of lot sizing and the setbacks. And the reason being is because the way they have it...
That was a yes or no question.
Sorry. I get on my monologue. So, yes, that's the reason why, is because it doesn't meet the UDO.
You and Taylor Swift with your monologue.
John Peacock?
Was that 21.1?
Yeah. Thank you, Boer, for letting us speak tonight on this subject, knowing that it's been forwarded to the fourth. I do live at 123 Deerfield Drive, so I'm on a corner of Deerfield and a private drive, Albury. One of the things I want to point out is the stormwater issues that we've seen, personally I've seen, they are from the adjacent community, the Headwaters community. It has overflowed parts of the intersection of Clearview or Clear Run and Deerfield Drive, which overflowed the curve there and has eroded portions of the road. This was all due to tropical storm number eight. We've been assured that the stormwater drainage there was above and beyond state standards. Well, I mean, if this is just a tropical storm, that doesn't seem to be the case with that stormwater system, so I don't know what else they could do to improve it, but obviously it needs improvement. The other thing is the clearcutting of the property when they first started to develop...
Sir, could you speak up just a little bit?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me better now? All right. Sorry about that. The other part is clearcutting of the property, where they've gone in and supposedly they were gonna have buffers in areas where, you know, trees were going to be remained, or remaining trees were gonna stay, so that there would be a buffer between our community and this new development. Well, that wasn't the case. They went in and clear-cut everything. Supposedly, there was a tree survey that was going to be done, a tree study survey. I don't know if that exists. I have not seen that in the documentation that's been provided through the planning board or into the commissioners here. So I want to point that out. The other thing is the commercial lots that are a part of the apartments there are apparently, they have not been addressed, or they don't have anybody to come in and develop that part. There's not gonna be any commercial development on the part adjacent to Highway 17. The understanding is that that was gonna be there as a requirement for the stoplight. So the stoplight was gonna be a proponent for the neighborhood, for these new apartments that they could come out of Hughes Road and enter into Highway 17. So that apparently is not gonna go forward. Impact on schools. You've got Sidbury Road, Blake Farm, Poplar Grove, White Bridge, all these developments that are going in, either they have been completed or getting ready to be completed. And now you want to add 84 units to an existing development at Headwaters. I don't see how that's gonna help the school system at all. The other thing is construction traffic. We've seen an increase of construction traffic through Deerfield, on Deerfield Drive. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Pat Donovan-Brandenburg?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thanks for the question.
Thank you. Pat Donovan-Brandenburg, 201 Creekview Drive. Thank you for allowing us to speak, even though you'll see me again on November 4th. We appreciate it. The rezoning request that was made April 7th, 2021, at which time the planning board unanimously denied, said that the proposal conflicted with one objective and two policies. It was denied because the Pender County Schools did not have capacity to serve the proposed development, and the Pender County Comprehensive Land Use Plan stated there wasn't appropriate infrastructure, which has not changed and is still true today, two years later. So what has changed is the proposal of a new school, a K through eight. The problem is, is it won't be open until 2027, which is two years from now. The Pender County School Land Use Study, which I have a copy and I know y'all do too, states that the number of K-13 students is expected to be over 13,000 students in five years, with an annual increase of 460 students per year. Just this year, 24-25 school year, they're saying that it's up by 427 students for a number of 11,256. Currently, the report states that we are at 118% overcapacity with our schools, the TOPSLE schools, and that we will be overcapacity by 150% in five years. And the new school is still not open until two. So the new school will hold 750 kids. In this report, it predicted opening that it will need to house 1,003 kids. So upon opening its doors, it will be overcrowded by 253 kids. If 84 more apartments are to be built on this site, say they're at least two-bedroom apartments, not even three, two kids are in each household, we're now adding, sorry, adding 84 kids to bring up an overcrowding amount to 337. The other infrastructure is the stormwater. The stormwater is not going to the pond in the back. It is bypassing, running out of the road and out of the storm drains instead of in the storm drains. They're full as of today, and it's not had a significant rainfall in about four weeks. Why are these pipes full of water when they're supposed to be routed to the pond? They've been full of water since the day they were put in. So I will also say broken promises about the light, the trees, the buffers, and the encroachment on wetlands.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Jerabek?
My name is Bob Jerabek. I'm a resident at 118 Deerfield Drive, which is right behind this project. I'd like to thank lady and gentleman for allowing me to speak today. I'd just like to say, this company has not been a good neighbor to us at all. It was mentioned earlier about the trucks. Today alone, I saw two concrete trucks driving down Deerfield Drive. We dealt with logging trucks, we've dealt with construction equipment trucks, material trucks, and everything else going on down Deerfield Drive. Next thing is, is they've changed what they wanted on this place since day one. It was originally supposed to be a commercial center with a grocery store. Obviously, there's no grocery store going in there. The noise that comes, I've listened to the noise now for almost two years, I guess, from 7:00 AM, and last night it was after 7:00 PM before they stopped. You know, okay, development's fine, but that's kind of a little ridiculous. Then we had the burning of the debris up there that spread ash throughout the whole, well, half of Deerfield neighborhood. I had it all over my house, all over my deck. I couldn't even use my hot tub because of all the ash coming down constantly. So we had to put up with that. There was a pump that was supposed to be pushing this rainwater that we talked about. It was running for 24 hours a day, seven days a week when they first installed it. The project, I had it called project manager after consulting with the planning board, or planning committee, whatever you guys are. And they told me to call the project manager. I called him. He did remedy the situation after a few more days. He had no idea it was running. The traffic light was already discussed. I'd literally like to talk about the destruction of the wetlands behind it. I've lived there for almost 28 years now, actually a little over 28 years. I now have a pond in my backyard, not wetlands. It's because of all this water that just stays here, and I think somebody said, four weeks without any significant rain. The destruction of the wetlands where they're mitigating into the wetlands, cutting down more trees in the wetlands, building and pushing dirt back into the wetlands. And if you'd like to see what I'm talking about, I have pictures here, which I'd be more than happy to share with you. You can have those. I got copies. But anyway, to me, it's pretty disgusting for somebody who wants, should be a good neighbor to our community. I thank you very much for your time. I appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Doug Holdstein?
Evening, everybody. My name is Doug Holdstein. I live at 313 Creekview Drive, Hampstead, and all the subjects that I was gonna bring up have been pretty much covered, but we were kind of, we're here because we're kind of distrustful of the system. We attended the planning board meeting. We understood that the, that would be on the agenda item tonight, and then thankfully, we got a call from Daniel saying it had been delayed. But the signs announcing that the agenda item was gonna be discussed tonight remained around the project, and it was on the website. So I got a lot of calls. I'm the president of the old Deerfield Community Association, so I got a lot of calls of the confusion. And that confusion has created distrust, not of you all or the system, but of the developer for the Hawthorne at Headwaters Development, the apartment complex. They've scheduled a meeting for the public in late July, early August, in which they scheduled it, I don't know if this was intensive, intentional, or by coincidence, but they scheduled it for the night of a Board of Commissioners meeting, so we didn't have any of you attending, didn't have any of the planning staff there. It was just us. The second thing is, they, at the planning staff meeting, the planning board meeting, we brought up the big three, stormwater runoff, traffic, and kids. Okay, stormwater runoff, they said that they had completed 85 to 90% of what they needed to do for stormwater runoff, and as has been described, doesn't work. We've had flooding. The traffic, we talked about the stoplight that was supposed to be part of the apartment complex, and then we get they pulled the "I'm a victim" card by saying that it's NC DOT that's keeping us from putting up the traffic light. And they, I had one of my residents say, because they called Swain and Associates, the Swain and Associates said, "You have to get a petition among your residents to change NC DOT's attitude about this and get them to approve it." Well, I didn't think that that was our job. It's already been talked about in better detail than what I'll say, but their attitude was, if you know the difference between an MP and a YP, an MP's my problem, a YP is your problem. They said, the YP, it's your problem. You're not doing enough to accommodate the new students that they're bringing into the apartment complex. So they laid the blame on you guys. And that's the kind of answers that we got. They don't care. They don't care. This is just business. No role is over. And that's all I've got to say. Thanks. Bye.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Drew.
Those are all the signups, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And like I said, once again, they'll be back on November the fourth. And it, it has got confusing lately with a lot of rescheduling and requesting for continuance, and, and at some point, I think we need to get a grip on that and, and put limitations on how that works. It makes it inconvenient for people like you, and we can't make the decision to continue it until we get here and vote on it as a board. So that's why the notices still say that it was happening tonight until we got here tonight and voted to continue it to the fourth. So I understand that, the concern there, and I agree with you. So I think we have one for twenty-one.
There were no signups for the second one.
No, no signups for the second one.
Yes, sir.
All right, so we'll move into twenty-one point three, rezon of twenty, twenty-four dash seventy-four.
Drive safely going home at steer season.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you all for listening. We'll be waiting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too, Max. Drive safe.
I'll, I'll take it round.
All right.
I'm going to talk directly into the mic for Mr. Gross. All right, so I'm here to talk about rezon twenty twenty-four seventy-four. This is going to be two parcels with two different owners. The applicant is Wanda B. Wills. She is a real estate agent. She's not a developer. Unfortunately, she could not be here tonight because she's out of the country. So Wanda B. Wills, applicant on behalf of Carlos Moore, Tanya Moore, and Darnell Bradley, owners are requesting the approval of a general use rezoning map amendment to rezon two parcels of land totaling approximately one point two eight acres, point six four acres each, from the RP Residential Performance zoning district to the GB General Business zoning district. So here we have the vicinity map, and I just want to point out a few things to orient everyone. So this is going to be the Topsail Montessori School. Right here, we have some commercial applications for a gym, restaurant, medical office. At the end of Christian Chapel Road, there's a church. Down Brown Town Road, there's some more churches. This big parcel right here is a, like a shed dealer, mulch, all of that, just down the way. And then all, this big group of parcels right here is a bunch of buy right commercial developments. So there's going to be a vet office here. This big parcel right here is called Integrity Building. It's going to be a construction business in a gym. There's going to be restaurant shopping right here, and then more shopping and office space on these parcels right here. So it'll be a bit of a commercial area in the future.
So let me ask you this. All of the adjacent parcels to this property, what is it, GB or RP?
So this is, this parcel right here is GB, and that actually went to you guys about this time last year. It was rezoned from RP to GB. To the left of it, right here, to the north, those are RP.
So anything that does it front seventeen is RP?
This parcel right, see this little skinny bit right here? That's part of this parcel, that is GB.
That's IT, right?
That's GB. And, and the subject property is right now RP?
Yeah, they're both RP.
RP.
And I think you're right, Mr. George. It's IT. This parcel right here, right behind it, is GB.
Which, which one is GB? The one directly beside it?
Where the red dot is, yes, where it backs up to it.
Remember last year, Mr. Nate Duke came, that's the property.
Yeah, and I have a zoning map, and I'll, I'll get to that one. It's the run right after it. So like I said, so this was rezoned last year to GB. This is the parcel behind it, that's like the shed dealer, the metal building dealer, that's IT. There's a significant amount of PD, and then RP, O and I where that church is, and then some more O and I where the other churches are. And then some, a little bit of RA in the back. And so this is the aerial view, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped. So this is that rezoning map that you guys would have saw last year, the Roland Dixon rezoning. So this parcel was rezoned from RP to GB, and that was a general use rezoning as well. So this is the aerial. As you can see, both of those parcels are heavily wooded. They're not developed, there's nothing on them. Here's some photos of the site. So this is going to be Christian Chapel Road, where those parcels are. Again, that's wooded. And then this is going to be the end of Christian Chapel Road, where that church is, and this is the intersection of Christian Chapel Road and Brown Town Road. All right. So there is one buy right residential use in the GB and one by SUP. There are eighty-three buy right commercial uses in the GB and fifteen by special use permit, and these are the standard GB setbacks. So traffic, according to the WMPO, Christian Chapel Road, this section of Christian Chapel Road is seeing about eleven percent of its traffic capacity. So two hundred and twenty-nine trips currently, and it can take about two thousand. So here's our feature land use map. It is neighborhood mixed use. All of this right here is neighborhood mixed use. The neighborhood mixed use category is primarily dedicated to non-residential uses that provide services, entertainment, and amenities to residents within a three-mile radius. And staff is recommending approval. The proposal is consistent with the neighborhood mixed use feature land use category. The proposal is compatible with the uses in the surrounding area, and the proposal is supported by four policies in the comprehensive plan. When this went to Planning Board last month, they unanimously, unanimously voted for approval. And here's our Board of Commissioners language.
Do we have any of the applicants here?
Ms. Willis is out of the country, and the two landowners do not live here, so they couldn't be here. I do have a statement that I can read. It's the same statement that was read to Planning Board, or I can provide it, whichever, paper, whichever you prefer.
Yeah, just read it.
Just read it, okay. The Bradley and Moore families own prime land along Highway seventeen in Hampstead. As the area around them has grown, they've recognized the increased demand for commercial opportunities along this bustling corridor. While they aren't developers themselves and don't have a specific business plan in mind, they see the potential for their properties to become an attractive location for future business owners endeavors. Currently zoned as RP Residential Performance, their land is limited in its potential uses. By rezoning their property to GB, General Business, the Bradleys and Moores aim to open the door to a wider array of commercial possibilities, making their land more appealing to potential buyers. They are not seeking a conditional use rezoning because they do not have a specific reuse in mind. However, the families believe this rezoning would enhance the marketability of their property, allowing future owners to explore diverse business opportunities that align with the growth and needs of the Hampstead community. For the Bradleys and Moores, this rezoning represents a strategic decision to position their land in a way that benefits not just their families, but also the future development of the area.
Read that last part again.
Yeah. The, however, the families believe this rezoning would enhance the marketability of their property, allowing future owners to explore diverse business opportunities that align with the growth and needs of the Hampstead community. For the Bradleys and Moores, this rezoning represents a strategic decision to reposition, to position their land in a way that benefits not just their families, but also the future development of the area.
Well, that was so nice.
So their interest to this property would be off of Christian Chapel Road, correct?
Correct. The Roland Dixon, and I think it's Farina Holdings is the LLC that owns that business, but that little strip right here, he owns.
Right.
So their interest would be off Christian Chapel Road.
Is there any questions for staff? I'm all about getting residential off of seventeen. I like business there.
Are you ready for a motion?
I am. If there's no questions for staff.
And this is your district, right?
Yep. It's Mr. Burton's.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the zoning map amendment to make finding that approval is consistent with the following policies and objectives, the Pender two-point oh Comprehensive Land Use Plan, five-point-one C, Coordination with Infrastructure Services, five-point-one D, the Focus Growth of Development, five-point-one E, Compatible Development, five-point-one K, Commercial Development. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the neighborhood mixed use with the future land use classification of the Pender two-point-zero Comprehensive Land Use Plan.
Couple of motions, there are second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, thank you.
Right, so me again.
You're there again.
Yes.
Special use permit twenty, twenty-four dash forty-eight, requests for special use permit to operate a country store in the Topsail Township.
Mr. Chairman, since this is an S U P, you need to swear. And the only signups are the applicants, but if you think you're going to speak, you need to be sworn at this time.
Yeah, stand.
Stand, please, stand. So I'm going to swear the testimony of this evening, and be the truth, the whole truth, so help you God. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So just so you know, that's, the special use permits are a little different than the rezoning, such as, as the last one.
This is outside judicial.
Michael and Tanya Register applicants on behalf of Joel and Michael Register owners are requesting the approval of a special use permit for retail trade, specifically NACs four-four-four, building material, garden equipment and supplies dealers, NACs four-four-five, food and beverage stores, NACs four-five-three miscellaneous store retailers, and NACs four-five-four, non-store retailers in the RA Rural Agricultural Zoning District. The subject property is located approximately a thousand feet west of the intersection of Old House Road and US Highway seventeen in the Topsail Township. And just a little bit of background, the registers are a bona fide farm, and a bona fide farm, as I'm sure you guys all know, allows them to sell their own product that's produced on their farm. However, it doesn't allow them to sell product from other farms or just general retail merchandise from, you know, that they can order and, and sell. To do that, they need a...
Excuse me, let me interrupt you just a second. Is this the property that we heard last year that had the traffic issue with the neighborhood?
No, that was Surf City, that was Surf City Farms.
Thank you.
This is Lakeland, Lakeland.
So just a quick rundown of those different uses, because I know normally we only have one or two, and for this one is four. We wanted to make sure that they were covered, because they want to do a country store. We don't want them, you know, if they decide they want to sell a different kind of product, to have to come back to the board every single time. So this will allow them to do that country store and sell a myriad of different things. So four-four-four for building material, garden equipment and supply dealers. This is retailing new building material and garden equipment and supplies from a fixed point of sale location. Equipment and supplies may be kept either indoors or outdoors, undercover areas. Four-four-five for food and beverage stores, they're retailing food and beverage merchandise from fixed point of sale locations. These establishes, establishments may have special equipment, such as freezers, refrigerated display cases, and refrigerators. Four-five-three, these establishments include stores with unique characteristics, like florist, used merchandise stores, and pet, so pet and pet supply stores, as well as other store retailers. And then four-five-four for non-store retailers. They've told us that they want to have an online component where, you know, people will order what they want online and then come to the farm to pick it up. So four-five-four will cover that. So here's their site plan, and I'm sorry, it's a little small, but this is their existing building. So here's the road, existing building. This will be a little bit of parking. This will be their new building, and then this is their septic area, and this little square right here is existing bathrooms.
Can you back up just a little bit? I remember when you were going through four-five-four, four-five-three, four-four-five, the uses. Let's talk about four-five-four. The non-store retailers, such as the broadcasting of infomercials, direct response advertising, publishing of paper and what, how is that consistent with selling items in a country store?
That would be their online component. So there's a, a longer description to that, but we had multiple discussions with them. They want to be able to have a website where people can place us, you know, maybe they want a few pounds of meat, a specific kind of meat or something, or vegetables. They can come and pick that up at the farm after doing an online order. So maybe there's a, a table, a specific day on a Saturday, where they've got these online orders ready to go, and people are just coming at their specified time to pick up their order. Four-five-four was intended to cover that, because it's not exactly coming into a store and shopping and putting something in a shopping cart.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so here's the existing conditions, the aerial view. As you can see, it's heavily wooded, it's a very large site. I believe they own about twenty acres, so pretty isolated back there. And this is where those existing buildings are. All right, so here's the vicinity map. So down here, that's going to be your Bojangles and Autozone, Tractor Supplies over here, and the Surf City Loews is, is right here. Maybe? All right, so here's the table of permitted uses, and this is just to show that all of those NACs codes we talked about before require special use permit in the RA. Here's the zoning map. So this is going to be where the store would be, the building. This is all environmental conservation, the incorporated areas of Surf City, and there's a little bit of RP. And our future land use map, so the parcel is rural agriculture. Again, it's surrounded by conservation. There's a little bit of low-density residential there in the orange color, large bit of incorporated, and a little bit of neighborhood mixed use there with the purple along seventeen. And here are the eight findings of fact for a special use permit. It was cold in here, now it's very warm.
Is the heat running in here?
We need to stop a second. Please.
Are you about to monkey?
I'm about to pass out, this lady is too.
It is hot in here.
It is hot here.
It was perfect the way it was when we came back.
No, it was freezing.
No, it wasn't.
You could have killed a hog in here.
You were just used to that hot building in the back.
Maybe that's what it was.
Thank you, Mr. Van. Is there any questions or comments, questions?
I think it's a great opportunity for the community to have something like this. I think, I think it'd be well worth it. I, I like it. I like it. My family owns a country store, and it's, it's very good for the community, especially integrating local, local folks that can come, and especially pick up online. I think that's really good, forward-thinking. I like that.
Any other questions?
Now on traffic, when you were there with the lights only for the time, a lot of we went there.
Very nice.
So it sounds good, man.
Any signups?
Only the applicant.
Would the applicant like to speak?
Probably not, but I will. I'm not a speaker, so you're forgiven. I'm Tanya. Mike's my husband over there. I got voluntold to be the one to talk to y'all this evening. Our family's been in Pender County a long time. My husband's family's been here over forty years. My family has roots that go back many generations in Western Pender County, so we care about the county.
Where in Western Pender County?
Kelly, well, they're kept, other side of there on Kelly, but then they were more Atkinson, that sort of area.
Kankakee.
Great-grandparents, and before that, were there, so.
Okay.
To try to keep, we have the part, the twenty acres that she was discussing there, and we have the twenty acres in front, in front of that, that's known as Lakeland's Christmas Lights. Some of y'all probably know of it, some of you probably don't. So to try to keep the land, as y'all know, property taxes going up, land available's going down, we're trying to find a way to keep it. So we started a farm. We have cows, sheep, goats, pigs, chickens, turkeys, name it, it's back there. We sell our meat, born here, raised here, not your typical grocery store meat, but farms are hard to keep alive these days. This is our fourth attempt in the last year and a half at this country store dream we have here. There's been a lot of turnover in different apartment, departments, and we've spoke with lots of different people. We've had quite a few meetings with these folks and some other folks in the planning department. department. Each time, things changed. So originally, we wanted to use our original farm building that we had, thirty by forty metal, metal engineered, freshly installed building that was built on concrete with footers by contractors. They said that we couldn't, um, because even though we got the electrical, the septic, the water, all the other permits, we didn't get the building permit because it's a farm So we kinda had to step back and say, okay, what's our new game plan? Later, we had a second meeting, and someone at that meeting suggested, well, maybe it would be easier for you to set a tent in front of this building and sell your non-farm products out of that building. You know, farms are having a hard time living, so we want our farm to make it, we wanna help the other farms get their products out there too. So the third attempt, we tried that, and there was different people in there at that time, and it didn't work. They said that even with the tent, we would still have to go through all the stuff, storm water runoff plans, and all the different departments and I's and T's that you have to cross. So we gave that up. So this is our fourth attempt to simply build a six-hundred-square-foot building. Um, at this point, our funds are really limited, because we spent a lot of money building, you know, the other building, getting everything done right, and that's the whole thing. We, people are like, well, just do it and see what happens. We did, we wanted to do it the right way, and we've kind of been put through the wringer 'cause of it. And not intentionally, not saying anything bad about you guys, okay? But it's been a very difficult process for our family.
So what, you still have the first building, right?
Yes, yes. They, NC, we have, um, it's USDA farmland. We have our NCD-A Meat Handler's License, which says that we can sell our products from our farm out of that building.
Right.
But they said, we were told that if we wanted to sell products from other farms, that it's not safe for the public. This building was built two years ago. We were also told, we talked to someone, and they told us that it would be cheaper to build another building just like it right beside it than to try to get that one inspected. But just because, like I said, the electrical was commercially inspected, the septic, the well, all that stuff's been inspected. But the building wasn't, because it was a farm building, so it falls under the exemption we didn't have to.
So the building wasn't inspected when it was installed?
Correct, correct. Because it falls under the farm exemption, farm use.
Yeah, I, I get that, but...
Yeah, yeah, it's, all this is, like I said, this has been a year and a half.
Isn't there something that can be done after the fact?
It would've required, uh, some work from an engineer to, to do some digging and do some certifying.
Is there any staff member that can assist these folks to walk them through that process if we pass this motion today? 'Cause it's a shame.
Absolutely.
That's, that's a shame and a waste.
It is.
We should be helping you to succeed in your business.
Yes, we should be helping you. We should be not making you jump through needless hoops.
Yeah, and, and we try.
There's gotta be a shortcut, a way to get that done.
And I'm not trying to say anything bad about anyone.
No, 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 we're not thinking that.
No, 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 please don't take it that way. We're not judging or focusing with anybody. But, I mean, like we...
We know how these things go, but when you say there were new people, we get it.
Each, each time, there's been different...
That's right.
People. And, um, you know, we have certified engineered plans for the building. It was done by, built by Carolina Carports. The concrete and footers were done by B and B Concrete. It's not like we were just out there mixing concrete ourselves, you know? Um, we just, and then we had to get, pay a surveyor of another few thousand dollars just to get you the survey and site plan that she had up there on the screen.
Right.
Just, all that, just to get in front of you guys.
Okay.
We really just, we want your help. You know, I can't promise you that if they can't make our other building work, I can't promise you we can come up with the money to build the second building. But if nothing else, I hope this kinda sheds some light on some stuff that really needs change, 'cause, you know, I understand you got to have rules and guidelines, but there's so much, we've been told numerous times that whether it was the farm laws or the UDO, everybody's had a different interpretation.
Sure, I understand.
And this has been our fourth attempt, and each time, we're said, try to do what we were suggested, and then, well, nope, now we gotta do... It's, it's just been, you know, we're not trying to do anything crazy. We just wanna sell some produce along with our pork and beef and...
So you can make it a little bit profitable and feasible for you to maintain your property.
Exactly, exactly. I mean, we're part of the goodness grows...
I'm in the same position. I'd like to make mine a money-making proposition now, but all it is is a grass-cutting proposition.
Well, you know, we're a part of the Got to be in Sea by North Carolina Apartment of Agriculture, where, you know, goodness grows in North Carolina, all that. Qualifications to do, to be that and to be a bona fide farm. One of those things is that fifty-one percent of your income for that farm comes from your products, which means obviously that forty-nine percent of your income can come from selling someone else's products. So, you know, we're not trying to do anything crazy. We're just trying to offer something to our community that we don't have. We got enough dollar stores and store chains. We, we need something a little different. So, you know, whether we can afford to do this or not, I hope this kinda helps y'all to help make some common sense clarifications, if that makes sense.
Well, it helps us to understand sometimes that we need to go to the room where they keep common sense locked up and open the door.
Exactly, exactly. I mean...
Well, no, sometimes it's just a matter of getting the right people in the room.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's just a matter of sitting down with the right people in the room at one time and seeing what can be done. And I think this might be a situation where that could be done.
Well, we really appreciate it, 'cause, you know, we, and honestly, the main reason we do all this is because we want to keep our, we're not ready to sell out, but we gotta pay property taxes and all that stuff somehow, right?
Yeah.
So we just kinda wanna keep Lake Linda, 'cause Lake Linda's not just, I mean, it's our home. We raised our kids there, and now our grandkids are there. But it's a place of joy for a lot of people, and, you know, I'd hate to see that disappear because...
So you're planning on doing the lights again this year?
We're hoping. We're trying, but it's been really difficult, so...
I went there last year.
You oughta get that TV show guy to come down here.
They did it.
Yeah, we did that in twenty nineteen.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
But you, uh, come highly recommended, it's good people from A County MP who has relied on you, which I think you know, Jewel Horton.
Yes, she's very...
She sent me a text, she said, "Lake Linda people, and they help us at the shelter." And I was like, okay. So now I understand what she meant, so, um...
Thank you for not giving up.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you for not giving up on us, really.
Thank you for your patience and, and believing in the process. So are we ready for a motion?
We are.
Mr. Burton?
Sure. Yeah, I'll make a ma, a motion to approve.
I second that motion.
Wholeheartedly. All in favor, raise your right hand.
We appreciate what you do for the community, guys.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
Mr. Manager, can you see that the right people get in the room with these folks to discuss how we can work out their building situation?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Thank you for all you do.
And, uh, come visit Christmas.
Yes, ma'am. Y'all drive safe going home.
Thank you, y'all, good time.
Board members, we have finished everything on the agenda.
Motion adjourned.
Time to go.
All in favor?
Hey, uh...
Let's go set some horses.